Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Jordan Delong.
Here.
Taffadini.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Mabel. Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Kel Karin.
All right, prayer?
Let's bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for this another time that we have the privilege to come together, Lord. I pray you be with us, Lord, at this meeting and direct us in the way that we need to go. I pray you be with the ones of us that's not able to be here. I pray you look down upon them and give them a speedy recovery, Lord. Now, as we do business for the county, I pray you bless us all together. Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is approved, disapproved minutes from the full commission on May the 19th as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Hickey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Motion passes. Next, approved, disapproved committee A meetings from June the 2nd, 2025. All right. Roll call. Jordan Delong, Terry Hickey, Terry Hodges, and Taffadini were present. First order of business, motion was made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong to approve the bid for the U.S. Food for the Jail. Roll call. All members in favor. Do I hear a motion on that?
I like a motion to approve.
You don't have a final cost because their prices are just like anybody else's. The eggs, your lettuce, tomatoes, stuff like that, there's not a set price on it. The price is not locked. Now, some of them are. The ones beside, let me look at it.
It says weekly prices updates.
Yeah.
They can change.
Yeah. Where it says weekly price updates, those are the ones that can change. The other stuff, that is a locked-in price.
Motion was made by Mr. Hickey. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. Any more discussion? Should we just all in favor correct? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Motion passes. Motion made by Jordan Delong, seconded by Terry Hodges to approve the school systems fund 141 budget amendments as presented. Roll call with all members in favor.
I've got a question on that. It says new budget. And then some of it says grant. I mean, what?
Do you see that?
141 here says new budget. The other one says new grant. I mean, what's it say? I mean, what am I saying?
They did receive a new grant. That was the $50,000 one? Yep. So that's a new grant.
That's another. Oh, just grants stuff that they put in for and they got.
Some of it was, yes, and others were just cleaning up line items before the end of the year.
Did anybody heard anything about the trash contractor that they put in the grant bid or?
Yeah, we received the grant and it's actually a part of the minutes.
And the school got one?
Well, um.
It's coming.
We'll be bringing it up in a few minutes.
Yeah, we'll be bringing it up in a few minutes.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I didn't see it on this.
This was just moving money, right?
Yep. The 141 budget for the school is just moving monies from one area to another to clean up the budget before the end of the year. So. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong to approve the school systems fund 143 budget amendments as presented. Roll call. All members in favor. Do I hear a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
Second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. Roll call.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, under old business, motion was made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Terry Hodges to move $1,800 from $39,000 to line 51-800-335 for custom construction for repairs to the historical courthouse building. Roll call. All members in favor. We actually don't have to do anything on this. We had enough money in that line item to go ahead and get those repairs completed. So we don't have to have any action on this. It's already been completed. Under new business, motion made by Terry Hodges, seconded by Jordan Delong to accept the solid waste grant for $138,162 with a county match of $13,816. Roll call with all members in favor. So this will consist of the, um, compactors?
This will be two compactors, one's a 240 volt. Actually, it'd be.
Two compactors and a 40-yard receiver?
It's not 140 yard. That was a mistake on when the grant was, when they submitted it to the state. That's supposed to be six.
We've got that in an email where they corrected it. So it's six 40 cubic yard octagon receivers at $50,532, 240-volt compactor with install and delivery for $59,447, and a 460-volt compactor with installation and delivery for $28,183.
And the 460 was one we was going to take it over there to the school.
Okay.
And we can take the old compactor to whatever site that we want to. We just have to buy a different voltage motor to go on it. Use it at a different location. And we didn't get the truck. There will be another bid coming up in September grant that we can apply for. And we can reapply for one then.
Everybody understand that? If so, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, wait. Who? Woodley? Who seconded? Chandler. All right, motion made by Mr. Woodley, seconded by Mr. Chandler. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini. Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Terry Hodges to pay Lakeland Electric $1,480 for jail from county buildings. Roll call with all members in favor. Is this something that's already been completed or?
We're supposed to already start it this week.
Do I hear a motion on that?
What is that for?
For, um, it's actually soap, like a soap dispenser, but they have to have their own outlet. It hooks up. They have to have their own outlet for that. Now, this is for any inmates that come in. They are to be washed, showered, and it's part of that. Before, like he said, they were running extension cord. That will take care. And they haven't been using it since then, so.
Do I hear any action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Hickey. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next order of business, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong to move $5,000 from line 39,000 to line 58-400-506 for insurance. Roll call. All members in favor. Yes, 101. I'm sorry. Do I hear any action on that?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Delong, seconded by Mr. Woodley. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Jordan Delong to move $270.98 from line 39,000 to 52-300-317 for data processing. Roll call. All members in favor. That is also 101. Do I hear any action on that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Jordan Delong, seconded by Terry Hickey to move $575.25 as presented by county trustee. Roll call. All members in favor.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a minute. What is that for?
That would be for a bonus out of her, um, monies, her, that she collects.
Is that same person, if we give a bonus this year, will she, that person get a bonus extra besides this?
I would expect that any, um, if we gave a bonus at the end of the year, that we couldn't exclude anybody. We'd have to give everyone the bonus unless we do some type of, uh, um. What word I'm looking for? Um, like a serv-, like a, uh, how their performance was, a performance or, uh.
Merit.
Evaluation.
A for performance.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So this person's going to get two bonuses, China? Maybe?
Potentially, yes. And also in the past, others have done that, so.
What other people has done that?
I mean, uh.
The same trustee?
Yeah. We have, uh, a couple of departments that have airmark money that can be used for bonuses or salary increases. But if you'll look, um, she did some more digging. If you'll look at the next email, it states that, uh, her commissions can be used for, uh, office supplies, salaries, bonuses, and other, uh, operational costs as long as they're, uh, properly budgeted and approved.
Who is Ms. Fox?
I'm sorry?
Who is Ms. Fox?
And there is a motion on the floor.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hickey. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
No.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
No.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
What's the? Six and two. Motion passes. Next, motion made by Terry Hodges, seconded by Terry Hickey to, uh, create solid waste line item 116-55-731, 187 for overtime. Roll call. All members in favor. And this is simply, uh, because of the prison not having their compactor. We're having to, uh, take, uh, extra bins over for their garbage collection.
He's working on Saturdays and Sundays.
Yes, he's going on Saturdays and Sundays some, yes. And he would max out his, uh, comp time. And it is in their policy that they can receive overtime. We did not think it was there, but after review, Heather found out that it is in there, so. It can be done.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I will. I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Next, motion was, uh, made by Terry Hickey to adjourn. All right, next order of business, approved, disapproved committee A meeting on June the 9th, 2025. Roll call was Kel Karin, Terry Hickey, Terry Hodges, and Taffadini present. First order of business, motion made by Kel Karin and seconded by Terry Hickey to move $387.40 from 101-44-170 miscellaneous refund to line 101-54-110-187 overtime. Roll call. All members voting yes. Do I hear any action on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion was made by Mr. Hickey, seconded by Mr. Woodley. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Terry Hodges to move $5,000 from 39,000 to 116-55-731, 187 overtime. Roll call. All voting yes. And this is the line item for solid waste.
It's a duplicate.
Yep. Oh.
That's the one.
What?
What was that?
It's the same.
Before, before we just, we voted to create the line item, this, we put money in.
We didn't put money in it.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hickey. Do I hear a second?
Yes, I'll, I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Karin, seconded by Terry Hodges to approve continuing budget. Roll call. All members voting yes. And this is just in case something's wrong with the budget that we're going to propose next week.
We don't have to do that.
We don't?
Right. No, I'm sorry. I didn't get that to you.
The law's changed.
Okay.
It, it allows you all to continue to operate under last year's budget for the months of July and August without.
Great. All right.
And that's my fault there for not.
I said it's a David last week.
He did send it to me and I didn't.
That's fine.
Get it taken off.
All right, next, motion made by Kel Karin, seconded by Terry Hodges to pass the 25-26 budget. Roll call. All members in favor. We will have a special call meeting on next Monday for, um, Tuesday. I'm sorry, the 24th?
Yeah.
Yep, 24th for, uh, any discussion over the budget and, um, to pass that budget.
And this is to pass our budget, not to raise taxes.
Correct.
I've had several, like last year when it was fit on Facebook, hey, y'all raising our taxes? We're coming next week.
There's not a tax increase.
To pass the budget.
Yeah.
No tax increase.
There will be a public hearing at five.
Yes, there'll be a public hearing at five and, um, but again, there's no tax increase on this proposed budget.
And we can do is pass the budget. Come special call.
So we shouldn't need any action on this, correct? Okay. Next, motion by Terry Hickey, seconded by Terry Hodges to adjourn. All right, do I have any old business? Actually, I have, uh, we have the, um, ambulance that was tabled. We need to, um, do something with that.
Make a motion that we, uh, bring it back and put it on Gov. Deals for sale.
Okay. Motion was made by Mr. Hickey to, uh, place that on Gov. Deals for sale. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hodges. Is that correct?
We're not going to need that for anything. I mean, you know.
No, um, I don't think that there's anywhere to house it. It's, there's probably a need, but, um, there's not anywhere to house it currently.
And it hadn't been used in years.
Correct. So probably our best bet with this one is to place on Gov. Deals, so. All right, motion made by Mr. Hickey.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Woodley.
No, you didn't have a second.
And Hodges. Hodges seconded. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. All right, motion passes. Any more old business? All right, new business? I have, uh, we're going to have to give permission for the fireworks at the civic center and fairgrounds. They have to have permission to use those premises.
Motion we grant it.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second? I'm sorry?
I'll second it.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Hodges. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. Motion passes. Next was the Van Buren County Mo-, uh, Mountain Homecoming. Permission to use, uh, that area.
I'll make a motion we grant it.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delong. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise. All right, next is, uh, Board of Education. Do you have some? Thank you, ma'am. Well, these are actually two different funds.
Okay. So we have a, from general fund 141, um, we have a reimbursable grant for leaps. Leaps is our after-school program. We're just cleaning up some line items there due to under-budgeting and over-budgeting on that first page. You can see at the bottom, it's just a kind of what we call a washout, 232-24 on that first page. Our second page is from fund 143, and, uh, we had to move some monies there. Uh, our summer feeding program, we had a, we didn't get grant monies for that summer feeding program, so we had to move some money to cover that cost.
Was that federally funded?
State federal, yes. So we, we, we lost some of that grant money. Yeah.
All right, do I hear action on, uh, 141?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Chandler. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next, the amendments for, uh, fund 143. Do I hear any action?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Roll call.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, I see, uh, fund 171. Do you want to explain this?
Yes, this is our Capital Projects Fund. This is what the ARP money was sitting in. All that's left in fund 171 is the interest. There's no expenditures that come out of 171. So Amy Hewitt, the, um, senior auditor, advised me to do an amendment to take the interest, which is $18,820.10, and do a transfer into fund 101. So that interest will go in that, and then we can close out fund 171. I'll write a check out of 101 or out of 171 and deposit it with Beth, and so that interest will go into 101, and nothing else will be done with Capital Projects.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have to do the? Do we have to do it twice? Are we going to require it twice? Because it's, this is a different fund.
That's for the fund 101, what it will go into.
Okay. So it's going to go in from, um. From 49-800 to 101-39,000. Same amount.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Smith. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next is a contract with primary care services. Oh, yeah. Do we need to do any action on this? We need to accept this contract?
You do need to accept it. That bid is for the Cumberland Family Care. Um, we did not bid it out. Um, I didn't catch it because it's done, like, it was done on a five-year term. So I didn't catch it on our yearly bids. So they had, I think, Howard, they contacted you, the sheriff's department. So this will get them through January 31st of 2026.
Okay.
And then after that, or before that, we'll bid it out.
All right, do I hear a motion for this contract to continue? Motion made by Mr. Hickey. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Woodley. All in favor say aye. Any opposed likewise. Motion passes. Next, fund 101, this is, uh, taking from 101-39,000. This is Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance, $6,000, and putting it into 58-600-207. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hodges. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Chandler. Roll call.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Taffadini.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Any more new business? All right, any comments from the public? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, okay.
Um, so Alyssa Farmer keeps posting stuff about you guys, not you guys, somebody in the Van Buren, about a metro government. Is there talk about a metro government?
There were petitions that went around, yes, and people signed.
Okay, and so is that going to be something that we're going to be pursuing, or?
I don't think that there's any action tonight, is there?
I just wanted to ask because she keeps posting it, and then people blow up and go crazy, and so I wanted to come and actually ask.
Thank you for that. It's a little bit of Miss Community Education.
So, okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Woodley, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.